Okay, we just completed the pledge. And at this time, I would like to ask if there's any public comment. I don't see anyone in the room. I don't know if there's anyone who wants to use the raise hand feature to make comment. Okay. All right, it's really hard for me to believe it's only been a month since our last meeting. I think it's felt like a lot longer, probably to everybody who's closely involved with the library. But I have to say, it's been a phenomenal job once again by the staff. The programs are great, the community is happy, and that's all wonderful. We are seeking a new director. We are currently working. We've appointed a search committee. Pam is chairing that committee for us, and we'll hear more about that a little later on. Last month, we welcomed Jennifer and Pam. Today, I have the pleasure of introducing Brian Cook officially new trustee. And we are entering our new fiscal year as of July 1st, and that's, we're in good shape for that. And we'll speak more about the particulars as we go through the agenda. And we'll, we'll get all those updates. I also will be appointing a committee to formalize our ongoing efforts around safety and security. And and then I have one update that I have to make before we continue, which is that Shoray Anand has resigned the Board of Trustees. So we will be accepting her resignation and then with all of our appreciation for her service. And then we're going to request that anyone who would be interested in serving with us on this board through next May, at which time the position would be on the ballot. If you're interested, speak to myself or one of the trustees, or you can use the CHAW board at Westchester, I'm sorry, at WLSmail.org. And that's on the website, too. That's, that's way to reach all of us. We all have access to that mailbox. Okay, so I, again, I hope you enjoy the, the programming and everything that's being delivered while we do the work of the library and get the new leadership in place. I do need someone to make a motion to accept the resignation of Shoray Anand.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Shoray.
And the, I'm sorry, the date. Oh, the date, it's a date that, yeah, like, I need to, I'm sorry, I didn't put that in my notes, and I should have. Well, we'll do the motion, ask her, her, her date, her letter of resignation, and then we'll go back and we'll tell you what that date is. Do I have a second?
I second.
Pam, a second. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, Shoray. Appreciate, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna, we're gonna get into the meat of the meeting. I think we should start with our resolutions. Oh, yeah, so we're gonna accept, yeah, sorry, let me go back. So we're gonna accept the, I clearly have on my mind the pressing order of the bank because we do need to get signatories, but let's start with, we're gonna accept the minutes from the June 19th board meeting, and we're gonna accept the minutes of the July 13th special meeting. And those minutes have all been posted for public review. And then now we need to get to signatories. So we have a resolution which someone needs to read. And then we'll, we'll make a motion to accept the resolution. I will, I'll do the honor of reading the resolution. And then you guys make the motions. Okay, authorize, resolution, authorize signatories for the board, for the Library of Bank accounts. Whereas the Chapel Creek School District Public Library Board of Trustees have a fiduciary responsibility for all library funds. Whereas the library has chosen Valley Bank to provide banking services. Be it resolved that the Chapel Creek Central School District Public Library Board of Trustees has approved the following. The Valley Bank Checking and Money Market Accounts. Add authorized signatories effective June 21st, 2022. Pam Moskowitz and Jennifer Feige. And we did that. And now we're gonna add authorized signatories effective July 1st. Brian Cook. And we're going to remove authorized signatories Ronnie Diamondstein, Andrew Farber, and Shoray Anand effective July 1st. So someone who would like to make the motion?
Make the motion that we accept the resolution as you just said.
Perfect. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That is very important to the functioning of the library. And so we now will get you guys up and running to sign checks as a secondary. We use two signatures on all our checks. Okay. Yes, we accepted, we accepted the minutes, we've done the resolution. And so, and I, and I pretty much gave my report. And I, I just would just echo my sentiments that we have a wonderful staff, and we hope that everybody's utilizing the library to the full extent that they want, whether that's digital or physical. There's plenty of, plenty of opportunity to get your tax value. Okay, so moving right along, we're, we're gonna go into, Jo, are you, you're, you're ready to give us a rundown on the financials?
Yeah. Okay. Let me just, okay, so the, the, the June report as presented here is preliminary. It's preliminary because we are keeping books open for maybe another couple of weeks, two, three weeks, to allow for any, any, you know, invoices that kind of come in late that are dated June or prior. We want to get that all into, into the fiscal period. So by the next board meeting, we will have this final, and, and then we'll, you know, get ready to submit everything to, to the auditors. As far as the numbers go, you know, revenue was pretty much on target with budget. Personnel is, is about $194,000 under the budget, which is, you know, a positive variance. We have overspent compared to budget on the building service contracts and the electrical charges. You know, and I just assume a lot of that might have been for, you know, just increased prices and such, so. But, you know, on the, we've underspent on, on administrative expenses as well. So overall, we have a surplus, an operating surplus of 216,000. And we have taken 90,000 of that, applied it to capital as was budgeted from the beginning of the year. So it's difficult to say how much additional expenses are gonna come in. Be terribly too much, but we, we should have a little over $100,000 surplus to, you know, for the board to decide what they want to do with it.
Right. And, and one thing that I know last time we had talked about possibly having a surplus that we could move into our fund balance or capital or as we choose. I think the one thing that we want to remind ourselves as we're coming to the July meeting still have not received all the tax dollars in, so we don't actually want to move it too quickly to make sure that we, you know, that we get the, the funds in to cover our expenses. So right now, we're, we're fine. The, the bank accounts are set up to support our budget and our plan. And at some point after these books close, and I'm so glad I now understand what preliminary means on this, Jo. I was struggling to figure out what you, what, what that meant, but it makes perfect sense that we need to make sure we close the books with everything. So we'll, I understand that now. And then we'll just have to look for when's the appropriate time when we get our, when we get our next funds from the school district is probably the place where we then would be able to make a decision about the surplus. Because by then, the books will close, and we'll understand what we're looking at better. Okay, so thank you for your report. Does anyone have any questions on the report? Okay, so then we need to make a motion to approve the June 2020 statement. Pam?
Make a motion to approve the June 2020, June 22 statement.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, Brian is seconding. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, excellent, that was unanimous. A review of the capital fund. Again, same, same story that we just went over. Does, does anyone have any incremental questions? Okay. Then we need to approve the July bills. Does someone want to make a motion to? And just since everyone's kind of new here, we make a motion, then we ask for a second, and then we discuss. So if there's discussion, we're not, you know, the motions themselves don't preclude discussion. And then after we, so the motions are on the table, there's discussion, and then we vote. Or we table the motion if we don't want to vote. Although in most of my experience, there's very few things that we are, that we would put a motion on the table and not want to complete it one way or the other. Okay, so do, so, so we just, we need a motion to approve the July bills, which did we just, we just, we just, I've lost where we are.
Brian? I thought was gonna make the motion, but.
Sure.
Sorry. Okay. I second that. Pam is gonna second it. I'm comfortable with everything. Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, the July bill's been approved. So that takes us to committee reports. And before we get into the committee reports, I mentioned earlier, I want to set up a safety and security committee. This really is a, a committee that, I'd say it already existed, but now I'm formalizing it and asking Jennifer to chair that committee for us. But the work is ongoing work that now Jennifer will take the lead on. And later this evening, we have the, we're even gonna vote on a proposal to add some cameras. So we're, we're taking appropriate steps and working with the staff to make sure that the building is safe for the community and the staff as best we can. And then I think the next committee report, I think Bill, I took, I, I felt like we kept doing building and grounds twice. So I think we'll do it as part of the committee report. But I would ask you to lead us off with anything that you, you would like to do. And then I'm actually gonna add Jennifer to chair the committee moving forward. But, but can you just share with us anything that, the, the most pressing items?
Okay, do you want me to do that now? Were we in that? Yes, okay. Okay, I'm unmuted now. Uh, I, I'm sorry, I didn't get a report in. But we really, we're operating pretty good. We are down, as we were a couple of years ago, we're down one chiller, one compressor on our main chiller. I will be getting quotes to replace that. We lost one about three years ago, and I think it cost around $12,000 to replace. We are good. We, we have excess capacity, so we are not in any trouble. If we lose another compressor, we'll be in trouble. So we do have to change this, but it's not an emergency. And that's it, that, that's the main thing. And I said I, I'll get bids for that, and we'll have it before the next board meeting.
Excellent, yeah, no, I do remember this coming up before, and it's good that we have little extra. And are we worried about parts, or this is a common?
No, no, it's, you know, the chiller's 10 years old, 12 years old, and they're starting to go. It's not time to replace it, you know, these are modules. They're made to be replaced. And we, as I said, we have the excess capacity, so we, we can fully operate on the 75% capacity.
Okay. Jennifer, do you want to add to building and grounds? Like, take us through what, what you're working on in terms of the bigger project that we're?
Sure. So Bill's been doing work for us in investigating alternative RFP participants to add to the proposals already obtained. And we'll continue that work so that we do diligence and ensure we, you know.
Excuse me, Jennifer, could you speak a little louder, please?
Oh, I apologize. I was saying that you've already been doing good work in an effort to broaden the field of RFP participants for the upcoming project to work on the facade of the building. Discuss the parking lot and management of the stream because we've had a water problem for decades at this point.
Yeah, and yeah, it's just, you know, I, my initial thought was to get one vendor. That's why I wrote the spec that way. Now I, I just, I'm looking for some direction from the board as to which direction do you want to go? Do we want to keep it, try to keep it with one vendor and let the vendor hire subs? Do we want to break it up into two or three components? The easiest one is the facade. We could break that off, and any full-service architectural engineering firm could handle that. Then we get into the grounds, they'd have to have some landscape experience, and then, of course, the waterway experience. I'm not sure even that little stream can be considered navigable waters. I know I, when I worked with PACE, we had a stream smaller than that. And because it eventually worked its way to the Hudson, the Army Corps of Engineers considered it navigable water, and we had to file off from permits with the, with the federal government to work on it, which beyond me, I don't know why, but. So I, we need guidance on working on that stream, and it's a specialized firm that will do that. Sorry, I'm getting a little seasick.
We need a, we need some Velcro. So we've, we've been doing additional work researching the history as well as the various regulations that come into play with.
I saw that, yeah.
So that will continue.
Okay, and so, yeah, I've long ago had dredged that pond in the past. And yeah, I, we, we can ask them to do it again. I don't think the library, I wasn't here the last time they did it. But I don't think they filed for any permits, they just did it. I don't know if we need to do that. I know you questioned Jennifer on your pictures on your report that you saw wooden planks in the weir, and that is one of the suggestions that one of the engineers had was to look at removing those and bringing the level of the stream down, which would bring the level of the pond down, to, to take away the water feature, just make it the width of the stream going through there. So that's another thing to consider. But again, that's all things we, we need help with.
Yes, agreed.
Good. Right, so I, I think we're working on a building checklist, punch list. And then we see that larger project running parallel with that. And, and you're absolutely correct. We, we're just trying to figure out what makes the most sense, and I think Jennifer's doing a great job doing research. And then we'll have a better sense of what, what our options even are and where, where we, where, where to go with that. So I appreciate that you're working on it. And just from a public standpoint, what might not be as apparent as the potholes of the parking lot is all the effort and thinking that's going in behind the scenes to come up with a more permanent fix because we feel like we bleed money out that parking lot that every time we do a pave or a patch, that it is, that it, that it basically gets flooded out or, or, you know, it can't be fixed in a way that cars won't roll over and pull the pothole out. So I think just from a, you know, I think Bill's doing a phenomenal job of trying to balance where we need to fill a pothole with where we need to be patient and wait for a better solution because literally all the money we spend on the potholes, it, it doesn't pay. We're losing, you know, so, but we do know that the public, they, you know, they drive here same as us, and nobody wants to drive over potholes. So we're, we, we appreciate everyone's patience. I know it's not the, it's not the, the entrance that we would like to provide. And so we are, we're trying to figure it all out, but being judicious with money and making sure that we don't just pave the lot and, and then want to do something different or figure out that the, that the stream channel actually is gonna erode what we just did. So all of this is really important context because I know we do have people that will say, why do you have potholes in your parking lot? So I just, you know, I'm.
I, I partially feel responsible for that because we, this whole thing started as replacing the parking lot three years ago. And I said, well, we really need more than just the direct replacement of what's, what's there, we need to look at everything.
Yep.
So now it's got bogged down for three years.
Yeah, so we didn't anticipate that, that the pandemic would come and.
The pandemic, the roof got in the way, there were so many different things.
So we accomplished a lot, perhaps the most obvious thing to the people that come here, the parking lot, is the one thing we didn't accomplish, but it's very much on our radar, and it's not for any lack of facilities management. I appreciate that you do balance that for us in terms of when we do patch and as we're waiting. So that's a sense of urgency for us to try to move that forward. But in general, we are hoping to have new, have a new leadership in place to be part of all of these decisions because it's not our intention to run the library in absence of a librarian expert. But these are the circumstances that we're living through, so this is where we are, and that is a high priority project. So anyone in the community who is interested in lending expertise, we would certainly welcome it. Okay, so we've done building and grounds. For, for policy, we have two, we have two new policies, well, not new, but two policies in the packet for review. We won't vote on them this evening, but we should discuss them, and then we'll bring them back for a vote. And in general, on policies, we have sort of a roadmap of how often we try to review them. We could probably firm that up and, and peg it to, to our board meetings so that we are even more, more meticulous about our timing. But every policy is supposed to be reviewed within a minimum of like five years, but a lot of them are annual. And then there's always new areas, like tonight in the packet is a social media policy, which is brand new. So, and the other one is circulation, so. And Bill, I, I, I just wanted, I realized we, we are, we're delving into other committees, and I wanted to thank you for giving us your report on the, you're muted, but.
I'll do spacebar. No, oh, he's thanking you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Bill.
Good night, thank you, anything you need, just call, thanks.
Thank you, thanks, Bill. All right, so, so just, social media, this is one that we've talked about writing, and Pam took the lead on doing the research and drafting a policy for us. And it's included in your packet, thank you, Pam. And so it's now in the public's domain, too, if they want to comment on, on it before we approve it. Is there anything you want to point out in particular as we review it, or?
I think that there has to be a clear idea of, of, of the social media outlets that we use here. For example, does the teen room, you know, does the teen librarian run her own? You know, like, like how many accounts are there, and who runs them?
Right.
And the checks and balances of that.
Yeah.
Oh, I want to post something, or I just read a great book, you know, so how many, so how many platforms are used for every department?
Right.
And that there, there's just kind of sort of this overall understanding that if somebody, if any department, even, even including the board, were to receive a negative, a, a negative comment or just a negative speech, that we don't have to answer it. You know, that, that we are in a position that, that we can delete it, and we, we don't, we don't have to be, I mean, I'm not talking about something that maybe we're not, like, something that's threatening or.
Right.
But if it's just so adversarial, you know, we, you, you can just delete it, you don't have to worry about it. But that also speaks to what are we putting up? Because, you know, we are a library, and it's important to show both sides of things. So if you're right, like, if you're gonna have all these books about being a vegetarian, then you might all, you know, then you might also have books about, I don't know, where we get our food from, right? Like, like that, you know, that it's important that we don't take sides of things. And, and that most, most importantly, as I wrote in the first two paragraphs, that it's a way for us to communicate information to our community, to share how we serve our mission and all the wonderful programming that goes on. And to, whether it's, you know, just, and to show all the activities and all the engagement that, that we do, whether it's, you know, in social media promoting the books that Joan has in book groups this month, or things like that. So it could really be used in a super engaging, positive way, absolutely. And that it's, it's not a forum to vent negatively. It's, it's just not, like, I think it's always okay to say to somebody, if you'd like, you know, we can discuss this offline, or, you know, things like that.
The one thing that it raised for me was what role the library would have in monitoring? Because I know in here, it said, there was one part where you talked about how frequently we would monitor the social media. And I don't think today, well, I know in absence of a policy, we don't have any, we don't have any official position on monitoring. And actually, we, as a board, we've requested a list of the social media app sites, things, and who owns them in the building so that we can understand what our current total communications look like. And who owns them in the building so that we can understand what our current total communications look like to the public. Um, which, so it sounds like, you know, you, you're, you're mentioning like the social media outlets and the path. Like that's, that's a, that's a sheet that we should have. But then additionally, are we as a board going to ask for staff to moni? You know, what, I think we're using the term loosely. We may just want to make it, um, in terms of language, the staff may monitor. So that if we wanted to add monitoring i- in a more um. Proactive way, we could, but we're not required to by our own policy.
I would just follow up on what Pam had to say about social media being an extension of all the departments. Um, but anything that we wouldn't put on the sign in front of the library is something that probably shouldn't be on social media either. That's just the, the litmus test.
Right. I think, right, it's not about, it's, it's right. I, I like your suggestion of kind of sort of moving away from the word monitor. It sounds, you know, very, it, it sounds like a, a direction that we're not looking to go, go into. So it should be clear who, who is posting, just, just so the department heads know. Who, who is posting? So, so a department head is not surprised when something is put on social media.
Right, so this works perfectly with what I actually for the next policy too, the same where. If the policy is written in such a way that us reviewing it every five years or every one year, whatever it makes sense for the particular policy. If it gives the, the staff the flexibility day to day to be able to own the actual working of it. So if we take out the language around monitoring, uh, figure out how we want to word it. But basically we want there to be ownership internally of the different platforms. And the board wants to be apprised of that ownership, but that the director. You know, whatever combination, however you want to phrase it, you can look at other policies, but there'll be discretion for the director to modify. So if it's an Excel spreadsheet that says the library has an Instagram account. It'll say who the owner is and it'll have all that information. And if we ever want to request it, we could get it. But the director will hold that and be responsible for making sure that that's adhered to. And that when staff leaves passwords change, um, and all that, that, that all is squared away. Um, so I, and that's kind of a, that's my, for all the policies, so. Um, or did, did anyone, did you have anything else on social media?
Okay. Please, we're making it.
Yes, yes. So that's great. So if you can find a way to weave into this, what we just talked about in terms of that. One master sheet that, that will be held a, as part of the operating library, that would be great. And then um, we also included in here the CIRC policy, which I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to do the same thing. With CIRC, so right now, the CIRC policy that's in here lists all the fines. And I actually want to make that, that fine listing not part of the policy. Because I think the library should be able to, as it, what's happened this year. Is they'll get something they've never had before. Let's say they want to lend out my cup.
Okay.
So then, right now, they have to go in and revise a policy with us in order to lend a cup. So I'd rather we do a little bit of a rewrite on the policy to make sure that we're still responsible and accountable. And that directionally, the fines and the, you know, the spirit of that is so that you bring something back. Not that we're punishing you, we're reminding you that you owe us something. So all of that will stay, but the actual. Um, loan periods, limits, fines will, will go into operating and we can ask for it. And, you know, have thoughts on it, but it won't be part of our policy. If that makes sense.
Sense.
Um, so I'm, I. I worked on this um, with the, with the policy committee, so I'm comfortable. I will take this and um, and, and bring it back with that change. So we can, so we'll have our first two sort of policies where we're attempting to separate out operating from. Um, policy a little cleaner, which should, should make things smoother for everybody. Okay. Alright, so um, the committee report that everyone wants the most probably is the search committee.
Everyone's waiting for that. That's really, that's really what we're, we're waiting on. So. So the search committee has been formed. It is myself, Brian Cook. We have Marge Perlin, who is head of circulation, and Robin Friedman, who is the head chat children's librarian. So we are four people and I'm going to uh, uh, open up by talking about an interim. An interim um, director for the library. So we have a candidate that is able to. That is able to start and we're working through with, with Liz and with Chantel. Just the, some things about payment and just negotiations about timing and things like that. And so we feel very good that we'll have an interim director on board, probably within the next couple of weeks. Moving on to the civil service. Uh, list of where we, we call people from. So the list is broken, which means that civil service can't guarantee us three applicants. Which gives us permission for us to look elsewhere, in addition. So there were two people who responded. Um, we communicated with both of them and we have heard back with one. Marge is away this week, so we decided as a group to um, hold off interview, meeting her. Meeting this potential candidate until Marge gets back next week. The job has been posted on the ALA site, the American Library Association stat site. And as of now, we have uh, two, two people who have responded. Um, they are from very out of town.
Yes. Okay.
So we'll certainly talk about what that means because I don't think we have a moving stipend. Right, so that, so that, um, and we also talked about getting it up on Westchester Gov website. And I um, I'm hoping that the woman who runs that received, received the job description. And was able to post that up.
She's now working with Chantel.
Okay, perfect.
Peace. Um, so yeah, no, that's in progress.
Okay.
Um, and then I think the New York lister for the libraries is the last place, right?
And the, yes, which I don't, which I have not, which we'll get to. I'll work with you on that. So we, so we're excited about the possibility, uh, uh, it looks like we're going to have interim leadership. We um, having, having historically been able to post this job on just not the civil website. I think that everybody feels pretty good about that on the committee.
Yeah, so the, and we have, have we posted the specs on our? We probably still need to post on the library page. Um, so we will also, very quick follow up to today, post the position on our own homepage.
Okay.
Um, with all the details, um, cause most people in this area know that these positions are. Um, civil service positions, we happen to be in the situation where we can. Um, in addition to interviewing civil ser- service candidates, we can look a little more broadly. So as is incumbent upon us, we're doing that. Um, but yeah, on our website, we can post the job specs. So anyone that's interested will know minimum requirement of a library science degree from an ALA accredited uh, institution.
Okay, so I'll work with Chantel on getting it up on our website. Okay, great. Thank you.
Um, do any of us have any?
Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate you jumping right in and uh.
And our other two committee members.
And our other two committee members.
No, that's great. Um, we're, we're, we have high confidence that you guys will bring us some good candidates.
Mm-hmm.
Um, alright, so um. So then we have um, two, oh, we have, well, so we're, we're now, I think we're done with our committee reports. Correct, right? We have many other committees that need to report. So now we're up to personnel. Um, and I think the obvious is that we're searching for a director. Um, the less obvious is how much work goes into um, into running the library. And um, and so I think we should talk about that and what the implications and where we. You know, where we feel we might want to make adjustments. So um, I think the uh, certainly separative. And with staff whispering in our ear, we've heard that there is a particular employee here who goes above and beyond. But due to a late start date, did not receive a pay increase in our fiscal update. So um, so the question is, do we as a board, typically, you know, we have our annual cycle. Um, but I think we're in a unique situation where this employee has been going above and beyond. Um, and, and um, and there is room budgetarily, especially now. Cause we're not paying a director currently. Um, so uh, is that something you guys would like to entertain?
Yes, definitely.
Absolutely.
Okay, and I think um, in terms of the, the rest of staff, all got three percent. I think that's a fair percentage raise, yes?
Mm-hmm, yes, agree.
Okay, and then the other thing we should consider is, I know you're working on an interim. Um, and hopefully that comes through within a few weeks. But I think it would be nice for us in the short term um, to do sometimes what we do as a department head stipend. So if you're running your own department, um, you get a stipend, it's prorated throughout the whole year. We can certainly give that employee, um, since that's a staff assistant position and there's not a department. Um, the director, we could, we could do that stipend um, and make the motion. Until such point at which we appoint the interim or permanent leadership. Um, that we could then rescind the stipend. Would that, would that work for you guys?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Makes sense. Everyone's really pitching in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then the only detail that I neglected to, neglected to look up. Is what the salary with a three percent, um, with a three percent um, increase. What that, what that comes to and um.
But we can move to accept the salary plus three percent.
Yes, let's write it that way and that way we can get the actual number. Um, okay, so I would like to make a motion to uh. Effective July first, so retroactively to July first, make a motion to um, give. Chantel Penna a um, three percent annual increase in salary. So effective July first, she'd start with the three percent increase. And I would all end, um. So let's, let's uh, make that one motion first. Do I have a second?
Second, the motion.
Okay, Jennifer, second thing. All in favor? I unanimous. Okay. And then I'd like to make a second motion to offer Chantel Penna the uh, the. Stipe, the he- head of depart, well, I should just say a stipend in the amount equal to a head of department. For the duration starting July first through uh, when we uh. When we.
Effect.
Have interim or uh, when we have new leadership.
Correct.
Do that.
Okay.
Uh, so that's my motion. I need a second.
Second.
Pam, second thing, all in favor?
I.
Okay, so I think that um, well, it, you know, well, it does. It, it takes care of a very important role, our staff assistant, which we value tremendously. Um, so we are, we're glad that the library is able to support that um, and support you and that you're here for us. Thank you. Um, okay, and then we have two additional. So for personnel, there is going to be um, a hire, but I'm told I, we don't have to make the motion. Um, we'll do it at our next meeting. Um, and um, and we are working on benefits manager. Potentially custodian, we're looking at those roles. Um, and for the. And, and we'll also send uh, back paperwork to civil service. Cause now the benefits manager role is also not civil service filled. We still have to stick to the job specs. Um, that, that we presented, but we can look a little broader there as well. So um, again, not like we, we're looking at filling that position because it would create redundancy, which is important. Especially when we don't have the director, but in general, we're not looking to, there aren't a lot of vacancies thankfully. But we're not looking to, you know, we're balancing what we're doing in absence of a director. With what we feel is judicious to help them when they get here. Um, so that's, that's my personnel update. Um. We also have um, the, the annual report for the state. This is usually done in the spring. Um, the state act, and this is like, a lot of the staff is like, wait, we're still working on this. But the state was late to supply the data this year, so the process got rolling late. And then we had asked for an extension because there were some figures we were reviewing as a board. Um, so everything is now as it should be, um, and we're gonna um, sign off on this here. And then um, our staff assistant will, will make sure this gets to the state. And again, this is the, these are the main statistics that uh, the state looks at in terms of library performance. And making sure that um, that libraries are doing what they're intended to do. Um, the state funds libraries and are, um, so this is really an important document. For, for proving the people that we're supporting and making sure that the value of the library is uh. Is, is what, you know, is, is there for people. Um, and this will actually also help us in the event that we need to apply for a grant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, these are the, a lot of the statistics that they go off of, so um. So that'll go out. The last thing we have is um, we have a uh. An estimate for the installation of two cameras and we've removed the locations. Uh, normally, again, this is director business that a director would, would manage. But this is something we felt like we should move forward on. The um, staff is in agreement that we should do this. It's logical and it makes sense. Um, so I would like to ask someone. Um, to make a motion to, um, and this is where it gets a little tricky. Because what I haven't figured out is who, normally we would authorize. The director to enter into, to, well, actually this isn't a contract, this is just a bill. So we just, yeah, so we're okay. We just need to make a motion to authorize the Chapacola Library to um, enter into. An agreement with EIPS um, for two cameras installed for a total cost of one thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. So that's the motion. Does someone want to second it?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Brian is second thing. All in favor? I unanimous. Okay, so that's great. So that work will proceed. Um, and. With that, we've concluded all of our, so to speak, old business. Is there any new business? Any new business? I'll look to, to the um, public, if any one of the attendees, if you would like to make a comment. This is your opportunity to do that. You would just raise your hand.
No hand raises?
Okay. Alright, well, I really appreciate you guys coming out to our, um, what will be. Our sort of inaugural re-emerging. We will be doing our meetings in public. With the option for virtual participation and we hope that um, everyone and anyone who wants to participate with us will join us. Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn our meeting at eight twenty-seven, one seven nineteen.
Awesome. Do I have a second?
Second.
Brian, second thing. Brian's seconding, all in favor? I, okay, that's that's a wrap, thank you, thank you, everyone, good evening, thank you.
Thank you.